I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call please, Mary?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Mrs. Raell?
Here.
Mr. Bumble?
Here.
Thank you, Mary. We'll start with our student representative report. Jack, come on.
So, um, Lincoln High School's uh, Senate Council won the Spirit of Excellence, and we will be receiving the award um, at a Bucks game.
Awesome.
And then...
It's a great place to receive it.
Yeah. Um, the National Honor Society um, got third place in the snow sculpting contest on February 8th. Um, Forensics is having their first meet, uh, which is sub-district at Aubreydale on February 17th. Uh, the musical is The Little Mermaid. And um, National Honor Society will be helping with the Kiwanis Youth Outdoor Day, which is from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then in fact, we'll be doing a workshop at a teen health conference at Marshfield Clinic Health System. And that is on... April 14th.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for the report. And we move on to the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of January 13th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of January 13th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Uh, we can, do we have any comments from citizens or delegations, Mary?
None.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to committee reports. Ed Services, Mary.
Okay, thanks, John. Um, Educational Services Committee met on Monday, February 3rd. There were three consent agenda items. Does anyone want anything to add? Alright, then I would move to approve the following. ES1, to approve Board Policy 361.1 ruled, procedures for selection and reconsideration of library materials for first reading. Uh, most of the changes to this policy are reflected in updated language relevant to technology terminology, selection of new materials, overdue fees, and lost or damaged materials. Next, we had ES2, to approve the 2021 Wisconsin Rapids Public School Strategic Plan. And included in this is an emphasis on universal social and emotional learning competencies, modifications and enhancements to professional learning communities, the successful implementation of academic and career planning, continuation to seek ways to maintain facilities to better meet the needs of students, energy savings and technology, um, the possibility of seeking additional revenue via levy override and/or bond issue referenda, and to look at creating a district environment that promotes educational innovation and creativity. And then last, we had ES3, which was to approve the proposed modifications to the WRPS Response to Intervention Guide. And Roxanne Filts presented proposed changes to the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Response to Intervention Guide. The document was created six years ago, and many of the changes are updates to terminology, programming, and how students are assessed. So that was still the three.
I'll sign your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ES1, 2, and 3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, now we went up to updates. We had two updates. First one, library and technology update. Phil Bickelhoff, Director of Technology, Tracy Hawke, Lincoln High School Librarian, Kirsten Johnson, Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School Librarian, and Jamie Justed, Elementary Librarian, updated the committee on the library and technology plan in WRPS. The district focus is on having future-ready schools and students. Librarians presented ways that are being used to accomplish this, including frameworks and a digital learning plan. Surveys have been conducted to evaluate where students are in meeting the strategic plan objective one at RAMS and LHS. The surveys show positive results. And we also had um, the AGR mid-year report, and that's the Achievement Gap Reduction. Roxy and Jen and Will Horn, our Assistant Director of Curriculum, reviewed results from the Achievement Gap Reduction mid-year report. The district has provided more professional development in math, and student results reflect positively on this. In elementary reading classes, reading stamina is encouraged daily. Students also have opportunities to choose books of interest that encourage prolonged reading stamina. And with that, I make a motion to approve the Ed Services Committee meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from the Educational Services Committee of February 3rd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Thank you, Mary. Move on to Business Services. John.
Thank you, John. Um, Business Services met on Monday, February 3rd, and our meeting was called at 7:17. Out of our meeting, we had three consent agenda items. Did anybody want anything to be held out? Alright, hearing none. Um, our first agenda item was um, Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative 66.03.1 agreement. And this is an agreement that we've done for multiple years now. It's part of a purchasing cooperative of 55 school districts. Elizabeth Messerly, who I'm gonna call Lizzie because it took me like three months to figure out whom it was after her marriage. Our Food Service Director would like to continue in the participation in the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative for the 2019 school year. Actually, it's... That's 20, I'm looking at my old notebook. It's been changed. The 2021 school year. The dues for this are $300. Middleton Cross Plains Area School District serves as the fiscal agent. And I just want to point out, out of that $300 on this month's bill or receipts, uh, we have a rebate, purchasing rebate of $9,517.42 due to the being in this cooperative. So that is just the fact, that's not the amount of money we're saving by the purchasing. It's just rebates that they all, we all get as a cooperative on food because of the volume of the foods that is purchased by the, by the group. Um, our second agenda item is a grant, and money's from Chef Anne Foundation. It's Get Schools Cooking Award. And we uh, Lizzie just uh, was telling us about that this is a unique program and is presenting a committee to develop menus using less processed foods. The program assists schools with transitioning from heat-inserted processed foods to preparing meals using whole foods. Now, this uh, grant is actually $35,000. However, there's a obtain of a value of $168,966. And Lizzie explained to us that that's training for Lizzie and our head cook and a couple other people.
Uh, yeah, myself and the direction coordinator. They'll, they'll pay for us to go out to Colorado is where the Chef Anne Foundation is headquartered. So we'll do training out there for uh, two days, just kind of looking at the administrative parts of our program. And then they'll come on site for a week, um, either at the end of this school year or sometime next year, what they're working with for other school districts. And to help us figure out a strategic plan for doing more scratch cooking.
So it's interesting, this was quite an approval process to get, to get accepted. And one of the probably positive things is the amount of food that we get direct from farmers already, plus the uh, amount of produce we get from LHS and the hydroponics and growing lettuce and different vegetables for, for our lunch program.
The City Times is just, for the board's knowledge, is gonna cover, have a story on that. And I'm sure the reporter reached out to you too after we talked.
Yeah.
And I think it's worth mentioning too, for the, the community at large, one of five districts in the nation that was selected. Yeah, so, kudos to Lizzie and her people.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So to...
You took it right from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't read your notes.
You weren't begging that to read.
I guess the issue would be, or the thing that's worth mentioning is that Lizzie and her folks, you know, this is not gonna be easy, right? So they're engaging, we get some money and training and so forth, and that's all beneficial. But she's also, she and her uh, department are saying, yes, we'd like to take on more workplace. So, you know, that speaks to Lizzie and her character, so it's, it's awesome.
Yes, I'd like to say kudos to uh, Lizzie and her group. Also, uh, she informed us that this is her fifth year already.
Really?
It doesn't seem like that long. So, uh, thank you for all the work you're doing and finding this, our kids' benefit. And uh, if anybody's been at the Lincoln High School, I know my son went and visited, and he was so depressed about the nice kitchen they have compared to what he had when he was there, so um, he was jealous. He was very jealous. And our last item is a floor finished supply bid, and that's our yearly uh, bid for the uh, equipment, or the uh, the goods to do the services on the floor. So with that, the committee recommends that I move to accept ES1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Committee recommends, and there's a second to approve ES1, 2, and 3? Do we have roll call please, Mary?
Mr. Bumble?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Raell?
Yes.
Can I ask Lizzie a question?
Yeah.
Is, is this the same as the CISA 9 group purchasing?
Uh, it was CISA 2 previously.
Was 2?
Yes, yeah, yeah, but we um, about three years ago, basically all of the districts uh, kinda transitioned to this Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Co-op.
Okay.
There was just um, some changes in the way that they were administrating the program that we had some disagreements with, and so Middleton Cross Plains stepped up to be the, you know, financial body. And then um, Pro Team is a consulting group who helps us kinda do the bid, you know, the going out for bid for our vendor is the biggest project, so...
I just, they were down at convention.
CISA 2 was.
The CISA one with the group purchasing?
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, yeah, I think they did continue, but most of our districts uh, transitioned, yeah.
Different Cisas engage in different purchasing cooperatives as well, so it depends on the region.
That's true, yeah.
So, uh, we did not have any updates or reports. We do have one future agenda item, and that will be our selection of the building trade home for next year, and that is on April 6th, before the board meeting on that night. So I move the balance of meetings, minutes be approved for...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the committee meeting minutes of the Business Service Committee of February 3rd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thanks for the report, John. Personnel Services, Sandy.
Personnel Services met February 3rd at 7:17, and from that meeting, we have six consent agenda items, and they are as follows. One, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff appointments. And that was what we just approved, the increase of occupational therapists the month before. We've already filled that, which is great. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff appointment. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the resignation of Tim Brunz from his summer school principal position. Four, the committee recommends I move to approve the one professional staff resignation. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff early retirement. Is there anybody that wants anything held out?
Uh, nothing held out. I just like a clarification on B. Was there a person to replace Tim?
There was what?
Is there a person to replace him?
Yes.
So that's in process, and what the personnel committee heard is that it'll likely be um, Bill Oswald that will take that over. And this coordinator position we're talking about is kind of a boots-on-the-ground person, and after this summer would be no increase in costs. So the former, you know, compensation of the summer school coordinator currently would transition over to, instead of one person, two people. One person would be the administrator, the, and we might flip-flop the terminology of the naming. Brian and I are still discussing that, but one person will oversee summer school in its entirety. That includes, you know, all of the development of the classes and getting the information out to people and to hiring teachers and all of that stuff. And then another person would be um, more of a principal sort of day-to-day, boots-on-the-ground facilitator, coordinator, student discipline, transportation issues, just while summer school's in session. And we'd split the current existing stipend like a third and two-thirds, so there'd be no increased cost. This summer, there may be, there would be a slight if we hired this coordinator or summer school principal, whatever we're gonna term it as, because we're still paying Tim for the remaining portion of his contract, and then Bill for the secondary portion of that. That's gonna be a 50-50 split. Um, because most of summer school work is done, it begins in December, December-January time, and then he's, he's resigning effective May, no, pardon me, yeah, May 15th, or something along those lines. And so that means Bill will officially take over for that second portion when classes are actually in place, finish up all of the record-keeping and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve PS1 through PS6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we had um, two updates and reports. Uh, one was on the district substitutes. We have anywhere between a 94 and a 95% rate of filling substitute positions. And we're going to be looking at information on what we should be doing with anything for increase in salary. We have to be competitive with other districts, or if they don't come here, they go somewhere else.
And that's just base wage that we hire people at?
Yes. Um, B, professional staff base wage, um, we're also looking at that um...
No, I'm sorry.
Jumped the gun.
That was B.
Oh, gosh, Sandy. You were talking about substitute compensation.
Yeah. On to B. Professional staff base wage. And uh, we're just looking at perhaps bumping that up for those that are coming in. Once again, we have to be competitive with other districts. So that'll have more information coming. With that, I move that the minutes be approved as printed from the February 3rd meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Services Committee of February 3rd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Uh, agenda referrals, information requests. Do they have anything this month?
I do. I would like to see if we can start talking again. At one point, we have this consortium of central Wisconsin schools that we're getting together, and maybe we don't need to go quite so wide. I think we had maybe too many schools that were involved in our talks. But if we could at least get together with St. Nacousa and Port Edward and talk about how we had previously talked about possibly sharing services and that kind of thing, um, I just think it's kind of crazy not to do that. It's, they're so close. And um, I know we had these meetings going on, they just kind of fell by the wayside, but I think it was just because there were just too many people involved, and um, maybe just to keep it into a smaller group, and maybe kind of look at bringing that back.
And I know at one point, we'd had the local legislators come in, and then it didn't seem like that went over very well from our perspective. At least, I didn't think so. And it seemed like kind of what we were saying was falling on deaf ears. The one meeting in Port Edwards, the gentleman sitting next to me looked at me and said, "I don't even know why I'm here." I mean, he was out of the Marshfield Stratford area, and it just kind of seemed like they showed up. Didn't seem like we got much out of that, so maybe if we narrowed the focus, what we're trying to do...
Right, right, exactly.
Get somewhere.
I thought we should invite them to the classroom.
Oh, I do too.
You know. See the day, day, day operations in some of this. They have no idea what's going on.
And we do have a local one that likes to go to work for a day in different jobs. Maybe that'd be a good opportunity.
Get them on the sub-list.
I just think if we were to just keep it small and focused, like you said, that if we were to talk to St. Nacousa and Port Edward and talk about this idea of maybe sharing services and things that we had previously kind of put out there, but it never really went anywhere, and I think it was just too many, too many cooks in the kitchen, just so to say.
Remember years ago, we had some preliminary discussions about having maybe some virtual learning between the districts, where, you know, if we had a classroom set up at Nacousa and Port Edwards and at Lincoln, then you could maybe do some more foreign language if you weren't necessarily, you know, especially for our district. We probably have it, but for their districts, you know, it'd be hard for them to offer. So if you had the opportunity for students to be at least in virtual classrooms, it might be beneficial.
And I don't know how receptive they are to that, but I think that if we just kind of put it out there and offer discussions, that can't hurt.
Yeah, I can follow up with their...
Can you think of things that we might partner on?
Yeah, and we, so we do have those conversations, without question. One of the, one of our biggest issues for here in Rapids would be, like, I'll give you an example. One of the things that they had shared in the past, Nacousa and Port, was people service director time. And um, they hired someone, rather than going through CISA, they hired somebody that was shared between both of the districts. And like for us, right, so the question was, well, hey, do you have people service director time? No, we don't. You know, with the number of staff and students that we serve, our director and assistant director, and us farming their time out would only do a disservice to our own programming. So that's one example. A school psychologist's time, I could see would be something they would be interested in. We do not have any to give. OT, PT, speech would be another area. Also, no room to give. In fact, would need to add staff if anything. You know, with, with respect to like sharing coursework and whatnot, so any kid technically under Wisconsin statute currently can come and take a class uh, at a high school. Uh, you know, so they could come from Nacousa or Port and take a course at Lincoln High School that probably comes transportation, you know, on midday, travel here and there. Um, so there, there's, those conversations do take place, but for us, the first question is, do we have any services to sell? You know, is there something that we can, we can, a way we can make it work? If the answer's no, then it's kind of like, eh, sorry, can't, can't help you out.
I think that maybe we just need a little bit of paradigm shift though, because it's not like these districts are so far away. And we could combine services like OT and PT. Maybe if we had one area that all of the kids, you know, who need certain services were kind of concentrated, rather than trying to have opportunities at, you know, three different schools, that, you know, that would be like their home school, that wouldn't necessarily, just because of it in the Rapids district, that, you know, they could... And I think it sounds like people are gonna be like, oh, no, you know, I don't want my kid going to front of the school, but, you know, almost more like uh, like maybe have a, like a more technology-based school, or more like a um, the, the idea that Nacousa has virtual, and we have virtual, that just seems crazy. They're, they're so close, you know, that we should maybe like look at combining our services more like as a district rather than three separate districts like that.
But it's giving up the revenues, the problem.
Right.
It's the revenue, that's where it goes to.
I'm saying, maybe we need a paradigm shift there.
But and some of these specialized services like OTs and psychologists and whatever, and HR people, they can buy some of these services through CISA 5, you know, they have the, the, a lot of professionals down there. And these smaller districts go, I need this person for perhaps this amount of time, and they, they contract for that. So that, you know, is available for these smaller districts.
It'd be easier, it'd be easier for them to contract with us probably because we're closer, but if we, if our people are busy, we can't really let them go unless they want to walk overtime.
But I'm just saying, there is, there is an alternative out there for districts that can't hire these specialized individuals. Like I know there was a couple of districts that needed a business manager, and so CISA helped, helped the districts during that period looking for a new business manager.
Well, uh, looking at something completely different, something like art, you know? If we have all of these art classes, and they're offered here, and they're offered in Nacousa, and they're offered at Port Edward, what if we put all of our arts sources in one school, and kids who wanted to like, you know, that was their thing, and they wanted to do a lot with art, that all of those would be, you know, concentrated in one area? You know, not just special services, and maybe music, or, you know, it could be all kinds of different things that we could kind of look at pooling in.
Do you know anybody who does that, Katie?
I think that we could be...
You'd be the first.
Why not?
You'd be the first.
Yeah, well, I'll talk with Kyle and Terry for sure.
Anything else? Okay, move on to legislative agenda. John's gonna give the report tonight.
Yeah, I do. Well, there are several things going on. First of all, Governor Evers planned what it would mean to your school district, and basically it goes through his proclamation, calls for the special session to convene on February 11th, which would have been tomorrow, will be tomorrow. His, his key keys are special education, reimbursement aid, and sparsity aid increases. Um, there's a public hearing next week on dyslexia, has been scratched, in American Indian Studiesville. And in place of this dyslexia, they are putting in a bill expanding part-time open enrollment. Which I don't understand. There are multiple bills that have not been brought up for a hearing yet, including the one on referees. There's several of them on different aids and sp, sparsity, oh, sparsity's coming, but different other aids. Governor Evers is calling for investments in schools, specifically in mental health, special education, and then sparsity age again, which is part of the package to bring more aid to these schools so they can get these, these services. There's another public hearing tomorrow on the lead testing bill with a new amendment attached to it. Uh, another set of bills dealing with the public hearing, and the school bills dealing with the dyslexia reading instruction. WASB resolutions were adopted by the 2020 Delegate Assembly, which I was a part of. Out of that assembly, there were um... Fifteen, seventeen motions brought forward, and all but one of them were approved. 2010 was rejected. That was dealing with the Native American mascots. And the bottom line is that they were asking for funding that really was affecting only about 31 school districts, so the 421 in the state, so that's why that one was rejected. And under that man, uh, there was one other thing here. Should print on front and back because it may get messed up. The President had an interesting little thing about, in his speech, about federal money being used... Oh, Advocate's School Choice Tax Break in a statement, said in the address. So, I'm not really sure what kind of reception I would get. Certainly hoping it doesn't go through, but that's all I have right now on the um, agenda.
There's been an appeal by WASB to reach out to your legislators around this $251 million package that Governor Evers has proposed, and John referenced this a couple of times. It would be, for us, what matters is special education aid increase. The estimate for our district would be $495,000, for our $95,100, give or take. Um, so that would, those would be dollars that we wouldn't have to spend on a, you know, or transfer on a Fund 10 to make Fund 27 whole like we do. So it would actually be freeing up about a half million dollars for us to use um, on regular spending. Um, sparsity, we're not impacted by the mental health supports and so forth. That's another grant process, and now the number's slipping my mind. I want to say it's like 3.5 million that he was anticipating putting in there. Then another portion of that package would be to pass along additional equalization aid, which by virtue of that would have a reduction in property tax. So he's trying to capitalize on property tax reduction, which is what the Republican caucus is talking about for this, you know, $450 million, you know, additional revenue that the state has. Um, I didn't see numbers, I was just, in fact, I just emailed their legislators prior to the meeting, but I didn't see numbers on what the equalization aid change would make a difference, you know, what that meant for Rapids in terms of dollars and cents. Uh, but clearly it'd be a reduction in um, in property, property values, so it wouldn't be new money to spend. And so that's why the estimates there of what the impact is locally, we don't know yet, right? But if we, if we do, in, in hearing a report uh, last Friday at CISA from John Ashley, oddly enough, WASB Executive Director, he said that um, he, he believed that the legislature would gavel in, gavel out, and call it a day. So we'll see if anything transpires.
Third time they did that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so.
I um, also would just like to add, as part of the, it's not, it's part of the agenda, but pardon me. Um, I, I attended a pre-conference workshop. It was called "The Opportunity of Conflict." And during this workshop, I had multiple opportunities to talk with other school board members, and I heard many different stories and issues with other districts were having with their school boards as far as divided boards and guys trying to run, run everything, and as far as not even being able to fill, get enough candidates to fill their board. So I got the thinking, and we, we did talk about it, and they asked, what, who, what does a school board member do? And that was one of their questions. And I would like to start by thanking each, each of my fellow board members for the time and energy they bring to the Board of Education. This board is one of the top of the line when it comes to dedication and commitment to the students of our school districts. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question that goes along, the school board's primary responsibility and the members of it is to set the vision and goals for the district, adopt policies and give district direction to set priorities and achieve its goals, hire and evaluate the superintendent, adopt and oversee an annual budget, manage a collective bargaining process, which we don't do anymore to speak of, but employees of the district. A typical school board meeting will have many business items such as approving the school calendar, adopting curriculum, overseeing construction, approving contracts with outside vendors. A successful school board will balance the special of seemingly tedious business of running the district while paying close attention to the district's priority for academic achievement. Beyond the school, the school boardroom, or the boardroom itself, our school board members do many things in this district. Volunteer in classrooms, volunteer to judge DECA competitions, volunteer for Reality Check at LHS, which is the um, program for finance that's mandated by the state. Volunteer to be sent out of school, attend CISA meetings, attend committee meetings outside of the meetings that we have for business services. There are many other meetings that we are a part of. other meetings that we are a part of, trade homes, CII, the health and wellness, there's a wealth of committee meetings that the board members are part of. Attend the trade home and, and the tours, attend regional conferences, attend WASB convention, attend the state delegate assembly, award, attend award ceremonies, attend supporting events and state returns, attend music events and concerts, participate in interviews, attend local meetings and assembly breakfasts, and upcoming this Wednesday, the, attend the bus driver's breakfast, may we us go to that? So, I'd like to thank my board members, and after hearing some of the stories, I am so thankful that we are a board that works together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to, next item is the bills.
I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second. We have a motion and a second that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have roll call, please.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bumble?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Then I'd like to point out one other thing on the bills this month. We have a focus on energy rebate from the lighting projects at the Grove, Needwood Side, and CS, what's CS?
Central storage.
Central storage, yeah. For forty-two thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents, that came back as a rebate. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Because you gotta do the paperwork to get it back.
Sure.
Okay, next item is new business. Do we have any employee appointments, resignations, or retirement requests, Ron?
We do not, next one will be this year.
Okay. Looking forward at the calendar, as John said, there's the bus driver appreciation breakfast on Wednesday, and then on February twenty-fifth, there's a CII committee meeting at eight